Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 18th special meeting of the Issaquah City Council Services and Safety Committee. My name is Chris Ray. I will be chairing the meeting. With me this evening are Council Deputy President Maria Batiste and Council Member Victoria Hunt. We have three agenda items this evening. First will be Agenda Bill 7640, Amending School Impact Fees. Agenda Bill 7655, Expedited Traffic Enforcement Pilot Project Summary Report and Extension. And then finally, a presentation from the city administration on the city gives, which includes a number of initiatives where the city is providing funding to nonprofits in our community. So we'll get going, I think.
A little bit.
We're going to start first with Agenda Bill 7640, Amending School Impact Fees. And we have a presentation from Trish Hanonnen.
Go ahead.
And also Steve Crawford is here from the Issaquah School District. So, welcome, Trish.
Welcome. Thanks for having us again this month. We met last month, as you may recall, and you were very clear and specific and had, I believe it is, four questions for the school district to help answer. Excuse me. And the four questions are listed in the Agenda Bill update, and I forwarded those to the school district as soon as your Agenda Bill came out so that they would be aware of the questions that you had last month and be able to hopefully address them for you. And that's all the presentation that I had was just queuing up the questions. And then I was going to invite Steve Crawford to come up and chat with you all unless you had questions for staff before I turn it over to Steve. Does that work?
All right, let's welcome Steve.
Good evening. Steve Crawford, Director of Capital Projects for the Issaquah School District. So if we look at the four questions, starting with number one, the rationale of a discount of 60% for the 219 proposal. Why 60%? The King County formula calls for a 50% reduction. The district looks at the total of impact fees and the relative change from one year to another. Last year, the proposed discount was 70%. This year, it's been reduced to 60%. That still translates into an increase in the single-family impact fee of 74%, increasing that fee from $8,762 to $15,276. Pretty significant impact and increase. The multifamily rate went from $3,461 to $4,399 for a 27% increase. So we basically follow the formula that's been developed since the beginning of the impact fee ordinance. And the 60% we felt was a rational change, a deduction from the reduction used last year, and still resulting in a pretty significant impact fee increase.
So why don't we take each question and see if we have any questions up here? Any questions from you all on the 60%? Councilmember Hunt?
It's just a clarification. When you started with the explanation, you were talking about the discount for the 50% mandated discount. And this is really a question about why specifically there is a 60% chosen by the school district. So it's really, it's not really a question that was related to the other discount.
Yeah. It's a rational choice. I mean, the reality is that the home builders industry is that the Olympia legislators pretty much every year lobbying for decreases and/or special concessions and/or the elimination of impact fees. And whenever they go up significantly, they're down there lobbying. We've seen in the last year and this year as well, a number of jurisdictions throughout the Puget Sound region have capped impact fees. And King County started a process last year to meet, to discuss impact fees and potentially limit and/or cap those fees as well. So we look at it as a balance between a collection amount, which helps fund new schools, and the potential for losing impact fees altogether. So that's one of the factors and the criteria that we use to judge things.
Follow-on question, or maybe a clarification. Did you say that the lobbyists have been successful in getting a, for example, removal of impact fees from a jurisdiction?
They haven't eliminated the ability to collect. They lobby strongly for that. They seem to have made some headway with other jurisdictions who have placed caps on the amount of impact fees that can be collected. That ranges at probably half of what we've proposed here.
Okay. Do you have a specific example of that, of the cap? There's one. Okay. In that case, I believe that it was the cities, the city. Who instigated that? Who instigated the cap in that case?
The city's the one that decided on the cap.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thanks.
Deputy President Batiste?
Thanks for coming and giving a presentation tonight. Steve, can you just speak a little bit more to the change from where we were at last year and then the move over to 60%?
Well, last year, last year, the proposed reduction was 70%. This year, there was significant consideration given to the discussions that we had last year and the feeling that that discount should be reduced and/or eliminated. In going through that and looking at the options and the advantages and disadvantages, we came to the conclusion that a 60% reduction was appropriate and still resulted in an increase of the single-family impact fee going up 74%. I think that, I think the reality is that we're seeing the impact of those fees, which are a part of the cost of housing, in that this is the first year in many, many years, or as long as I can remember, that we've actually had a decrease in enrollment, and a pretty significant decrease in enrollment at the elementary level, which to me personally seems to indicate that housing is getting unaffordable for young families in this area. And when you lose 256 kids from your enrollment last year to this year, that's 2.7%. Maybe not that a huge number, but it's a pretty significant number in terms of a trend that has been for the last number of years showing pretty significant increases. So we haven't had really enough time to kind of digest all those numbers, but that's one of the potentials is that for young families, it's not affordable here anymore. Seattle enrollment's down 700 kids. We see other districts that are down. Some districts are up. Some districts are up a little bit, but far less than what they were projecting. So there's more analysis that needs to be done, but it'll be interesting to see where October enrollments are, which are official OSPI enrollment dates.
Thank you. And just a follow-up question, just in terms of can you speak a little bit to impact fees just in general and how the school board is able to look at calculations across cities? So this is more than Issaquah. This is multiple cities that you're dealing with. Can you speak a little bit to that?
We participate with districts throughout the Puget Sound region and discuss impact fees. We all in King County go to the King County Schools Technical Review Committee every year to present our proposed impact fee. And the county quizzes districts on their methodology and the numbers that they've come up with. And so we all go through that process every year. And in that process, we know what other districts throughout King County are proposing. And through other coalitions, we know what other districts in Snohomish and Pierce County in particular are looking at for impact fees.
I'm Ann Moore, current president of the Issaquah School Board. And I think one point I wanted to add into what you're looking at is that we set these impact fees for all the jurisdictions within our school district. So these impact fees, the way they're set, looks at information across our entire district, which is Bellevue, or part of Bellevue, Newcastle, Renton, Samamish, Issaquah, and unincorporated King County. And so the input comes from all of those jurisdictions. We do a calculation to figure out the impact fee, and we do consider that discount. So the minimum, or the most it could be, is 50%. So 50% would be the local share. We have set it at a higher amount to try to mitigate the extreme jump that happened the year that we passed our bond, and we're looking at building a high school and middle school in our elementary schools. And so now you'll see, now that that discount is 60%, so we've moved it up, right, without being extreme the year that we added those facilities or added the fact that we're building those facilities. And now we've been able to, now that it's up there, kind of smoothed it out and reduced some of that discount. Okay? And so a part of that is, as Steve was saying, we want to set them to be able to bring in the funds that are needed to help put in these portables in buildings because this is the funds to mitigate that new growth. And so a lot of it is used for portables. But we want our other city partners to adopt these, just like we come to you and ask you to adopt these impact fees. We have to go to each of those jurisdictions to have them adopt the impact fees. And if they say no and don't adopt them, then that's funds we've lost. And so we are thoughtful of the extreme swings in those impact fees. I don't know if that helps answer what you were looking for as far as the different jurisdictions that we have to take into consideration within the Issaquah School District.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Okay. So is there any reason, well, let me state this differently. Do all of the jurisdictions have to adopt the same impact fees or the same discount?
No.
Okay.
We have historically found, not a number, but some of our jurisdictions within the Issaquah School District boundaries have reduced the impact fee that we've asked for by 50%.
So while, what we hear from you, and last year was really the first year we'd ever heard it, which was raise them. What we had always heard before was you are asking too much impact fees. And so the pressure has been to keep them down. So we've been trying to move them up without going to an extreme that causes some of those jurisdictions to come back and say, okay, well, we won't approve those impact fees, and therefore we receive no money.
Councilmember Batiste? Oh, go ahead. No, I'm fine.
Could you just speak a little bit more to why? Why other jurisdictions may decide that they want to lower those fees?
So I have not been out to one of the jurisdictions where I've personally been on the board and heard that message, but from what I understand, it adds to the cost of the development of the homes, right? And so they want the development. And so to keep adding, the impact fee adds to the cost of that development and potentially reduces the amount of development that developers will do. So I guess it's a different perspective.
So you typically, what has happened is the school board has tried to look across all the jurisdictions and set something that could be palatable to all of the jurisdictions in some way. However, if a jurisdiction wanted to step outside of that and do something separate, they could.
They could.
But in the past, you've tried to keep everybody with a certain number based on what you're hearing from all the jurisdictions.
Well, the process has a formula by which a fee is calculated. And then from that calculated fee, we can apply a discount. Certainly, there's the 50% local share, right? That's a minimum, the way it's split between what would be the impact fee to the developer and what would be the local share to the school district. We can discount it a little bit more from that. And that's what we've done in the last, well, actually, only the last three years.
Anything else on this one? All right, let's move on.
Number two, student factors, single-family, and Table three, student factors, multifamily. Those are the tables that calculate the student generation rates for both multifamily and single-family. And that's a look at developing or oncoming developments that are generating kids, again because we're trying to look at the impact of new development. We're using newer developments and not typically older developments in terms of developing that current student generation rate. And we do see that that rate does fluctuate from time to time, and it fluctuates by grade span. And we've seen recently that it's gone down some at the elementary level and it's gone up some at the middle and high school levels. But it's a selection of newer developments to get a good read on the generation of students from our newer developments.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Was there a methodology for how the specific developments are selected to meet that, meet those criteria that you spoke about?
That's been in conjunction with the business office and transportation. So I haven't really been involved in the selection of the individual developments other than to know that they're looking at the newer developments that are starting to generate kids that are coming online and becoming new impacts to the district.
Okay. Specifically, there are some that I wonder what developments they are. For example, Issaquah Highlands listed. I also noticed that there's one called Overlook at Brookshire. It is listed under both multifamily and single-family. So I had some specific questions. It seems like a lot does hinge on these specific developments that are chosen. And this was one of the questions that I had, which was about how they were actually selected and then what specifically these were.
Kind of newer developments that are kind of scattered around the district to get a general sense, with Avalon Bay being over in the Newcastle area and obviously Highlands Developments and Talus kind of spreads things out.
Okay. And you mentioned these were chosen with, sorry, with who?
With the business office, who does a lot of the projections for our student enrollments and our transportation department, whose mapping system locates every kid on the map so they can do a quick outline of a development and know how many elementary students, middle school, and high school students are coming out of any particular development.
Okay. Thanks.
Just a quick question. You mentioned that enrollment was down for this coming year, looking to be down this year. Do you go back and look at your projections to true them up and say, okay, this is what we thought the impact of this was going to be? And in essence, this is what the resulting impact was of these various new developments coming online?
Historically, we've been very accurate in our enrollment projections for the upcoming year. This year, it's a little bit different story. And so there are some surprises out there that we're starting to dig into to ascertain as best we can what's changing. Now, we know the real estate market has slowed down, and we know that there are some new developments that are still in the construction stages. It may be a situation where we see some of those new developments being occupied throughout the school year, and we'll see an increase in enrollment through the year. That happens sometimes. That's not in the overall typical, but it's a bit of a surprise this year.
So you mentioned that it was elementary school enrollment that was down. Did you see a similar trend or?
Well, middle schools were up 53, and high schools were up 52 in the overall grade span, but the elementary is the one where we're seeing the big decrease, and it's largely in the lower grades, kindergarten, first grade particularly.
Any other questions about methodology? All right. Oh, Councilmember Hunt?
In the developments, is there a weighting to how big the different developments are in terms of how they're accounted for and the way you use them in the formula?
No, the projection is a per-unit projection, which then gets multiplied by the total number of units. So like Avalon Bay is very large, it will ultimately generate more students than some of the smaller ones. But the generation rate is interpolated to carry through as an average.
Right. That was part of my question because some of these, like Avalon Bay, which has 900 units planned, has a much higher total student generation, predicted generation rate than the average. And that's the biggest one by far of the multifamily units. And then it gets averaged in with a bunch that are very, have much lower generation rates and comes out to less than half of the 1-4.
Yeah. As Ann mentioned, we're looking at a district-wide basis and kind of coming up with something that works throughout. Obviously, Avalon Bay is one that is generating a lot of kids in the K-5 range. In the past, we've had other developments in the single-family that have generated on the order of almost one child per household. So it's, it does vary considerably. It varies a lot on the unit mix that's in a development and numbers of bedrooms. More recently, we're seeing some developments that have more three, four, and even five-bedroom units available.
Okay. And then I also understand, just from looking at this, that it's based on the number that are sold. And so for Avalon Bay, for that example, there's further that it's based on seven units that have sold. So it's a very small number.
It's a small number. And again, it's a high number, so it gets averaged. It would really distort things if we said that it was a standalone.
Okay. Anything else?
Not on that one.
All right, let's move on.
Number three, calculation of the estimate of receiving $500,000 in impact fees in the next six years, Page 14, Exhibit A. For example, for Issaquah alone, that would only mean 33 single-family or 114 multifamily units over six years. Projection of impact fees is a guesstimate estimate as to what we see coming out of different developments, but the $500,000 is what's projected are in that six-year financing plan to fund portables, which is what we focus our impact fee collections on. It's a risky business to try and build new schools and count impact fees, and they do fluctuate considerably. And we found that some years you get more and some years you get less, but if you've built in a number that's real high into the cost of a project, you can find yourself short on budget to either get what you wanted in the project and/or complete the work. But portables is what we typically fund with our impact fees.
And I think another point in being conservative about how much we think we will get in the impact fees is that today, the developers are paying at the impact fees at permit and plat time, but they actually have the option to wait until occupancy, right? And that's another fear of having really high impact fees or high changes in the rate of what we're charging for the impact fees, is that they will delay giving the impact fees to the school district, right? So it's, and then in the end, when you get it further out, it basically has less value to it. So we prefer that to continue the way it is, getting the impact fees on the earlier end of the cycle.
Well, it's a follow-up to this question, which is, when we were looking at this at the last meeting, we were kind of trying to do some arithmetic and figure out what the projection was in terms of growth because I think as the council, or at least, I'll just speak for me personally, we think about growth and how many units are planned for our central area and that. And so as is pointed out here, we expect over 800 multifamily units in the pipeline. And then we came out that this would be either, I believe it was either only 33 single-family units or 114 multifamily units over the next six years. So it just.
But it's kind of that same thing. There's 800 units planned. We don't know what the absorption rate's going to be. And for us to build in a number that's high puts it in a position where people look at it like you've got more money to spend, and if you do enter into a downturn, you don't have that money. So it's kind of a bonus in a way.
So is this $500,000, is that, is it though, based on a number of expected developments and multiplied by the impact fee?
To some degree.
Okay.
So I look at this document, and this is the capital plan for the entire school district, which is multiple cities. So this $500,000 is what you expect to collect impact fees across all the jurisdictions?
Yeah, that we budgeted for, that we really count on getting.
So you're being just super conservative?
Very conservative. We basically, as a part of the OSPI process and this King County process, have to have secured funding that we list in this six-year finance plan. So A, on the impact fees, there's, it's not secured. The bond money that we've listed here is secured. It was approved by the voters. So we're being, as you said, very conservative on the impact fee collections in terms of how we're going to prove that we can fund these projects. And if we collect more impact fees than that, then that's great, and it goes into the capital program for providing additional seats for kids.
So you calculate, then, your bonding, your construction bonding requirements based on pretty minimal impact fees and funding most of the construction with levies, bonds?
In a conservative funding model, yes.
Right. I mean, the chart for the impact fees for collection goes like this, right? Because it depends. And there's nothing that says that there isn't a recession that starts tomorrow and all this development stops. There isn't anything that says there isn't a moratorium that continues and the development stops. And so to be able to guarantee that we're going to receive that money, we can't do that at this stage. And so they are very conservative. If the development is there, we collect the fees, the fees turn around and are used to mitigate that growth by helping us buy portables. So if there isn't the growth, we wouldn't need to buy the impact fees. I mean, we wouldn't need to buy the portables. We wouldn't have collected the impact fees.
Right. But a lot of the construction of new schools is being driven by growth.
And it's both the growth that's already in our buildings, in those portables, right? We have over 200 portables currently being used today. So some of this is that we want to get kids out of portables, and we're building new schools to do that.
So what happens if growth does continue, as I think some of us think it might? And so you end up with impact fees that are many multiples of the 500,000 you've got listed. What happens to that money and?
It goes into the capital projects fund, which is the money, the bond money, the levy money that's used to build new schools, do remodels. In the case of the impact fee money, it would all have to be allocated to growth, to providing new seats. new seats. Ultimately, if you collect lots and lots of impact fees, it might reduce the amount of bonds that you have to sell and/or obligate. So it ultimately all gets used to fund a new capacity. And if there's lots of extra bond money, impact fee money, it can help reduce the amount of the bonds that are actually sold or utilized.
Okay, so if, that's fascinating. So if impact fees come in at a higher rate than projected, then you will require, won't require us to buy as many bonds or to sell as many bonds as you currently plan to? And so that offsets on that side?
Right.
Great, thanks. Any other questions about this one? Okay, last one.
Okay, state match credit and tax payment credit subtractions from impact fee formula. As the taxes that are paid for bonds and total costs for school construction go up, the tax credit goes up as well. That's just how the formula works. And so it has changed this year. The tax payment credit has actually gone down a little bit. Last year for a single-family, it was $9,571, and this year it's $9,497. Multifamily was $4,017, and it's down to $3,908. Slight changes, but that's just part of the formula and how it works. We get the tax and valuations, assessed valuations, and the capital bond interest rates, et cetera. Those are givens, and the assessed valuation rate comes from the King County Treasurer's Office. So it plugs into the formula, and that number comes out at the bottom.
Any questions?
The local share also within this calculation, that incorporates the discount from the school district, not only the discount from the school district, is that what's being called local share?
Correct.
So if that weren't discounted, it would be the fee as calculated and then not the next?
Yeah, the fee as calculated is the straight bottom-line number that comes out of the King County formula process. The 50% would be roughly $19,100.
Okay, so if you, if the school district were to not have an additional fee, you would still take fee as calculated divided by 50?
Correct. Right. The fee as calculated is the fee, right? But the local share would be, at a minimum, the 50%. So if you use the 50%, then the impact fees would have been $19,095, which would have been 118% increase from the prior year.
Right, that would be the maximum fee for the developer, would be 50% of fee as calculated in that line.
Yes. Okay. No, the fee as calculated is the overall fee. We could never charge that much to the developer in the impact fee. The most we could charge is the 50%.
Thank you.
Can I rewind all the way back to the King County formula and the 50%? Because I don't think, for the people who might be watching us tonight, that people really understand that. And I think it would be helpful, if you could just take a couple of minutes and talk through the limitation that the county puts on the school district with the 50% share, how that works?
That was a part of a long process back in the early '90s, '91, '92, when the Growth Management Act came into place. And there was a realization that impact fees would be a mechanism to help, in this case, school districts collect funds to help fund new capacity and share some of the burden for that new construction on new development. Through that whole long process of discussion and all of the sausage that went in together, it came out with a correction number at the bottom or a reduction number of 50%. They could have decided it would have been zero, it could have been that it was 60 or 70%. They chose 50%.
I think that's important, for no other reason, that the difference between 50 and 60 is a lot less than the difference between 0 and 60. And so I think it provides some important foundational information.
Right, that is a really important point, that at a maximum, we could charge them the 50% of that fee as calculated amount.
Any other questions for our friends from the school district? Oh, P. President, Batiste.
So this actually may be a question for City Administrator Moon, but my question, at the end of our packet, we have an overview that was written in 2017 by the city attorney that talks about...
I was saying this may be a question for City Administrator Moon to answer, but at the end of our packet, we have an overview by the city attorney that, when we talked through this last year, this was part of the Q and A that came out of that. And there is a section that talks about whether the Issaquah City Council could decide to charge less or more than what the district is requesting, and what are the legal risks if the council does so? That's the question that's posed. And then earlier in this document, it refers to some case law. My question is that this was a year ago, and I'm wondering if this was reviewed in terms of current day, if anything had changed with case law? But it does also talk about that if that was being talked about, that we would talk further. It doesn't really give a clear answer of the legal risks. So just wondering if there's any additional information.
... reduce the fees but to increase the fees. You had to change your legislation.
Yeah. I know of no changes in the circumstances, and city attorney hasn't made me aware of any new suits that resulted in new rulings. So I think the memo stands as is. Attorney Haney provides some guidance here about what's possible under existing state law, and I think that's still consistent with where we are today. Thank you.
Thoughts or comments? Any questions? Any more questions, and I'll turn Steve and Ann loose.
Thank you.
That was real helpful. All right. Comments, deliberation? Oh. One second. Before we deliberate, maybe we should see if there's anybody from the audience who would like to comment, so we can factor that in. Would you like to comment, ma'am?
Connie Marshall-Levan Squawk, and it's a better presentation this year than last year. It feels a little more flexible. And you may have noticed you've been getting a lot of sort of, how much does the developer pay? How much does the community pay? Administrative costs, transportation, school impact fees, all of this. And so while the number may be small, what we need to do is make sure that the existing community isn't paying the burden for growth and that growth is actually paying closer to what it costs the community. And so I personally would just go for the 50% and try to eke up that amount, because it'll go into the capital fund, and the Issaquah School District at large would benefit by that. With that very small amount that they're talking about, I can't even imagine that developers are going to throw a gourd over this amount of money in the city of Issaquah when we see how much it costs them already. So the next thing is the assumptions of such a high raise in fee for single-family housing, which of course is not going to be what's going to be built. It's going to be multifamily housing, which did not get its share of the increase in fees. And so 27% increase for what we're going to get most and what we have been seeing more and more kids moving into, I think does a disservice to the impact fees. And those would be my comments. I think you should change it. I think you should reduce the reduction. Oh, that was bad. Double negative.
Thank you, Connie. All right, anybody else? I don't see anybody else. All right, thoughts or comments? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. This did answer a lot of questions that we had, and so I am appreciative of the information. I think this is, the discount above the 50%, it comes down to basically a 20%. If you just assume that there's the possible fee after the required calculation, then there's an additional 20% of what's left over is what is ultimately being discounted. And so I think it is a, it's a substantial percentage, I think. So I do think it is not, in my mind, a small amount. I also think that we expect to have a lot of growth, and we do expect to have a lot of growth in the multifamily housing, form of housing. And I think we, to the best of my knowledge, I expect that there will be a lot of families. And so I am concerned that the way this is calculating, and my concern with the questions, and then my continuing concern is that the schools, we do have, we have plans for growth and that if, as a city, we are planning to grow, then we need to have that growth pay for its impacts. That's the rationale behind these impact fees. I am looking forward to the discussion with my fellow council members, but my inclination is to collect the full amount that, to change our code so that we can make that change, because it's my understanding that we currently, we would need to make a code, we would need to make a change to our code to be able to make a change. But that would be my inclination, because we do, because schools are so important and we expect that we're going to grow, and we expect that that will be additional students for the schools, and that with that, I think it's very important that the growth supports that, those needs. So that's my initial thoughts, and look forward to hearing from my fellow council members.
P. President, Batiste, any comments yet?
I'm an...
Okay. So I have similar thoughts. And the challenge is, and the reality is, is any impact fees we don't collect are additional bonding that the school district will need to do that will then be paid for by the existing residents. So we create an extra burden on the existing residents. As Councilmember Hunt mentioned, we currently do not have the authority in the municipal code right now to do anything other than say, yes, we accept, or the change that proposed by the school district, or no, we don't accept and revert back to the 2018 numbers. So I think we have two interesting challenges in front of us. One is to address the question that the school board has brought to us, which is whether or not this is the right number for impact fees for 2019. And the second question is, do we need to modify IMC 3.63.080? Few calculations, pulled that right off the top of my head, so that we actually do have the statutory authority to make those changes. So I am, I guess I want to take those as two separate questions, if you're okay with that? So thoughts on that? Let's take the first one, which is modification of the Issaquah Municipal Code to change the council's authority on how to deal with impact fees. Any initial thoughts on that one, council?
I think, if I could, I think I'd like to speak in general.
Please.
And then hop over to, I think it's a good idea to break these apart. So after spending last year, walking our way through this and trying to better understand where the calculations were coming from and understand the way the school district is dealing with these formulas, it seemed to me that as they are developing their budget to be able to deal with their capital budget to build the schools that they need to build, that what seemed to work within that model was to have the ability to set a fee across jurisdictions, with all sorts of jurisdictions feeling different ways about this. We had long conversations about this particular issue, and the school board came back and had raised that, or lowered it, I'm sorry, to 60%. And so I did see some improvement and some movement. When I look at the alternatives that we talk about, it does, there is an alternative that talks about approving the proposed increase and committing to actively work with the district to continue to discuss the expectations and decrease the discount over time. There's one thing that's sticking out in my mind is that we, the school district is making, they're dealing with their own formula all across schools and looking at what works best for them. So for me, it feels very fast to come in and say, for our jurisdiction, we feel differently, and not completely understanding exactly how that would impact the school district or in terms of building the new schools that we know that we need and what those risks would be. And as I look through the letter and the reason I asked the question earlier about the letter that was given by the city attorney in terms of changing the code for that, it is really left up to, that needs to be a discussion. So for me, it's difficult to go forward and say, I feel, let's go ahead and change that code, when I don't exactly know what legal risk or what risk that may bring on either side, for the city or just the complete impact with the school district. So I do want to say, I completely understand the conversation that we're having and why we're having it, which is, which I think was maybe the initial question. Some of them came from me a year ago, setting on safety and services and safety, and just having had the year to work through this and being able to talk more with the school district and sort of understanding that formula. But for me, I think, I guess I would have to better understand what that would mean if the jurisdictions all started breaking apart, how the school district would be able to deal with that, what that would mean to, if they're losing a, you know, a chunk that is going toward the portables, and also that code change. is going toward the portables and also that code change. So, I have some reservation around going all the way from to recommendation number three.
Councilmember Hunt?
So, a few thoughts. I don't, I don't see how this would be resulting in less, in my understanding, if they're reducing the discount, they will have more money. And so, I don't see how this would be an impact in a negative way. I understand that there is concern that this would trigger a sequence of events, but I see the current event as ultimately, so it's 20% discount. That's basically if you have five years, that's adding up to a whole year's worth of fees, and we expect to have a lot of development in the next years. And I think that this is very clearly resulting in a loss of funding, whereas the arguments or the concerns as far as possible ways that this might trigger some unforeseen consequences and reduced funding are much less concrete where this is a way that there is a loss or a reduction in the funding for the schools. And I find the needs for the schools to have the funding for portables to be very compelling. And I think in our documentation, there's information about the growing student population. There's information about the need for more portables, the need for more school facilities, and that's only going to grow. And so, I am, I am in favor of making the change. I also, just to speak specifically to the code change, this is, I did review the previous discussions of the council. This is the second year that we've discussed it. And it seems to me that if we want to continue discussing it, this would give, this would give us an option for having a discussion where we could, we could act. And so, it's sort of a step towards, towards an action, and it seems like that's the path that the council was on previously as well, at least in considering it. So, I am in support of drafting the ordinance to make the change.
All right, let's, can we split them up? Because I think they're really two completely discreet thoughts, and I'd like to, I mean, they touch each other, obviously, but I'd like to deal with them separately because I think it'll make it easier for us to reach, reach some recommendations. So, so let's talk through whether or not we want to amend IMC 3.63.080 fee calculations. You know, and if we do that, that allows, that gives us the flexibility to set the impact fees. It's something different than what the school district brings to us because the current code essentially says we have the ability to adopt new impact fees from the school district or we have the ability to not adopt them and let the previous years roll forward. So, thoughts on that one? I think you just said it, but I'm going to make you say it again.
I am in support of drafting ordinance, amending IMC 3.63.080, and I think, dot A. And I think that it would, it would give us the ability to continue this conversation like we're having now. And it is, it is an option. Other cities have done it, and I think, I think that it is rational for us to consider it, given, given the state of growth that we expect.
Your President Batiste, any comments?
So, I think I've already, already stated that I have some reservations about just rolling forward with that this evening. So, that is something that, like I said, with alternative two, it would give us the opportunity to bring that forward in the future and have a discussion about whether we should be amending IMC 3-63-080 and also to, you know, have a robust conversation around exactly that. Going forward with that out of committee this evening, I'm not sure provides me any way, just with everything that I would want to see and think through, this would come straight back to council with a recommendation to amend. And I, and I'm, I'm still really in the middle on a number two.
So, let me put a different, slightly different spin on the amending of the IMC. What if we were just to make a recommendation to council to direct the administration to explore the implications and what risk would be associated with making changes to the IMC to give us that flexibility and return it to council before the end of the year? Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I actually think that that is what was done last year. So, we have information in our packet. The council members at that time did ask questions, including to our legal counsel, about, about the implications. And so, I am satisfied that that step was accomplished, and I am in favor of, at this point, drafting the ordinance, but I'm one of three.
So, having been one of, one of the seven that sat through that, I feel differently about that. I don't know that we, that we talked all the way through that. This was really the, last year was the first time that this had come up. There was just a lot of talk and consideration in terms of how, how we work with this within the context of the school district and how they are trying to do, work on their budget and just what all those implications are. So, if, if I can't today, and again, if you read through the memo where it talks about the legal risk implications, it sort of refers back to a conversation. It does not give specifics about all of that. So, I really, I don't feel the same in terms of having all of that information, understanding what the impacts are.
Administrator Moon, would you like to join us and maybe talk a little bit about some options as you see them on how we might move this forward?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think any of the things that you have considered are fine possibilities. I don't see any issues with them. Happy to pursue it however way you see fit and whatever comments you want to forward on to your council members. There's past practice for both making a recommendation and then saying we were sort of deadlocked or we had two options that we felt equally the same about. And so, any way that you want to pursue it, we will be happy to help with. To Council Deputy Presidents, such a long title. Batiste, her point about legal risk, I do tend to agree with Councilmember Hunt that I think that assessment has been done as best we can or as best the city attorney can at this point, but it's a little ambiguous. And I, and I think that's perhaps where some of the discomfort comes. We don't know what the reaction to taking one action or another might be. I think the city attorney has advised you in order to mitigate risk, his opinion is make the change to the Issaquah Municipal Code. That's, he can't guarantee, right? But that was his recommendation, that that would be a step to take to create some clarity and parity between Washington State law, King County Council kind of direction and the municipal code.
Councilmember Batiste?
Thank you, Emily, for that. I just, there's one thing that I wanted to be clear about is I did bring up the risk, the change in the code. I'd like to have more information about that. But the other, the other piece of this is after going through this for a year, sitting down with the full school board and having the opportunity to talk, the other piece of this that's, that's equally as important to me is just partnership with the school board and being able to understand the impacts of doing this as a city and, and how that impacts our partners on the school board. And that, that is equally and perhaps even more important to me. So, I, I would really want to understand all of that.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I think that's a good point, and I completely agree too that the partnership is important. I think that amending the, or amending, drafting ordinance, amending the IMC is still a solid option. It doesn't actually commit us to making a change. It gives us a option that we can choose to use or not. But currently, we're in a position where we, right now, but also in the future with this existing code, if we don't think that it's, if we just have the option of not accepting it or accepting it and other cities, and we could have the ability to make a constructive change, whether or not we choose to exercise that, as the chair pointed out, I think we can separate those two. But this, to me, I am in support of making the change to the ordinance that would allow us to, to do something other than simply adopt or completely reject. I think that it gives us the ability to have, to better consider options that would be in line with what we see as in the best interest of the city. So, I, I think that separate from the discussion about whether or not we should make a change, I think that we should have the ability to make a change.
So, I would, I would say that in further considering that, that is a really good point on both my council members' part, that us going forward and having the conversation, having the conversation with full council and talking about the change in the IMC and giving the latitude for the future is something that I could support.
Great. I do too. I think they are completely, I mean, like I said earlier, they are related issues, but they can be discreet. And so, we can give ourselves the flexibility through an IMC amendment or ordinance to change the IMC, give us the flexibility, and then we can turn our attention to, you know, what we want to do with this particular question in front of us for this year. So, Administrator Moon? So, what's, this is a process question.
Yeah, and I'm contemplating that. I know where you're going. And I, and I'm not sure that I have perfect advice since we don't have a flow chart that describes this. I think the committee could make a recommendation that council direct staff to do this work. That feels more consistent with what we've done in the past as opposed to just the committee directing. However, I believe your council handbook has some verbiage around certain number, minimum number of council members that if they wish to have staff work on a product that takes a certain amount of staff time, you could pursue it from that angle as well.
Your President Batiste?
I would, I would very strongly feel that I would like this to come before full council and let the full council be able to decide. I would have it be a recommendation that's coming forward and letting the full council have a discussion about, and setting that direction for administration from the full council.
Sure. And I, I think it can happen either way. I think that's more consistent with how we've approached drafting ordinances. I think resolutions, we've pursued that just by a handful of council members who have wanted staff to prepare something on their behalf. But I think directing staff to prepare ordinances has typically been given by the full council.
Councilmember Hunt?
This is a process question. In, in reading the agenda bill, it has the wording that this would be, that we would remand the AB to the administration. So, we are remanding.
Okay.
And then, so, I, I think we can still make a recommendation to the council from this committee regarding remanding to the administration to draft the ordinance, which would then come back to council for approval. Is that how it would work?
It could. I'm just looking at the exact verbiage too, which I don't, sure we absolutely have to hang our hat on, but it says, seek the adoption of higher school impact fees. This option would require an amendment to IMC. If this option is selected, council would remand the AB to the administration for drafting the ordinance. So, how do you define council in that? It's kind of the question.
My mind is kind of aligned to, I think where our city administrator was going, which is, we generally make recommendations. And so, where I'd like to go with this is to make a recommendation that the city council direct administration to draft an ordinance changing the IMC, as we've been talking about for the last many minutes. And that way, it'll, it'll give us, A, a broader discussion, and I think it is more consistent with our general flow on these things. So, so there's, we're going to do two, two things here. One is we're going to kind of vote to recommend to the full city council, Teresa, you getting this?
I'm trying to.
To direct the administration to develop an amendment to ordinance, ordinance, amending IMC 3.63.080A fee calculations to provide flexibility to the council to set higher or lower impact fees.
Change.
Change impact fees. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so it's a 3-0 recommendation to the full council. Can we get that on regular business for the October 1 meeting? Okay?
It's listed for the October 15th.
Can we get October 1?
Last time we did that, they changed an under.
They change everything I do.
Yes, it's, it would require another action by the council to change what's already in the agenda bill. The agenda bill gives notice to community that it's coming back on the 15th of October, and it's been our practice to try to hold to what's been published in the agenda bill. It's a conversation, as you know, that we can have with council leadership, but it does typically mean that an action needs to be taken to demonstrate that we're, we're changing the legislative timeline and path on a particular agenda bill.
Let's, if I have concurrence from my mates here, let's go with the October 15. And then, I'd like to revisit it when we finish this agenda bill because depending upon what we say on the next part of this discussion, we might want to accelerate it. And so, my thinking is, depending upon how we go on part two of this discussion, which is, do we want to change the impact fees? Change is the urgency of changing the IMC. And so, if we, you know, if we have time, 15th is great. If we are going to be pressed, 15th is less great. All right. You guys good with that? All right. All right, let's talk to the impact fees themselves. And the school district has proposed changes to the impact fees for 2019, changing the discount rate from 70% to 60%, resulting in a 74% increase in single-family impact fees and a 27% increase in multifamily fees. Any discussion? Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I think that these fees are important, and I think that the discount is non-negligible and... And I think that it's, that this is potential funding for a very, very important, very necessary component of our community. And I think that I'm in favor of not discounting it more than it needs to be, and certainly not 20% more than it needs to be. So I'm still stuck there, and I see a lot of reasons why this funding is important. And I think that we have heard too from the school districts that this funding is important. And so I am in favor of not discounting further than necessary and having growth pay for growth as to the extent's possible.
Councilmember Batiste, any initial thoughts, or? Okay. I, this is really hard. This is a really hard decision, and partly because I leave in our partnership with the school district and them managing their capital plan. At the same time, any impact fees that we collect reduce the tax burden on the citizens of Isqwa in terms of bonding, and that's important to me. And I'm completely in a place that I'm not usually, which is completely undecided on how best to move this forward. So I really would like to hear from you, Councilmember Batiste, on, you know, what your thinking is.
So, thank you for those thoughtful comments, because they're very, very similar to my own. I completely understand, again, the conversation that we're having and why we're having it for the same reasons that we did last year, and really tried to look into this, and again, did see the school district listen to what we talked about and actually decrease that amount this year. It's hard for me to, with, you know, with the word "impact fees" and the fact that we want, you know, growth to pay for growth, and we want to give everything that we can to the schools that we desperately need, those are all probably arguments that we can feel very passionate about, and I know that I do. On the flip side, it's very difficult for me to step into sort of the position where we're saying that we know exactly how to best deal with this issue within the capital budget of the school district. And it's really important for me, as I said before, to be a great partner with the school district. And so I think that I still would be on alternative two, which I can read, because there might be people that don't have that in front of them. But the alternatives are basically, do not amend the school impact fees and keep the, and leave the 2018 fees in place. That's the first alternative. And then the second is to approve the proposed increase and commit to actively work with the district to continue to discuss expectations and decrease the discount over time. And then the third is to seek adoption of a higher school impact fee. So without knowing all of the implications, it's difficult for me to roll forward to number three. I believe that what I would do is I would stay in the place of alternative two and to continue to talk about this. So if we do go forward, the council decides that they do want to amend the IMC, and then that's done, and it gives us the capability to make changes. And then to have further discussion with the school board about how this would impact them, because like I said, we went through that last year, and based on that, there was a percentage drop. And I realize that that may not be enough as we're talking about getting that full amount of money. But I would like to have the opportunity to have that conversation.
Just a question for you. What information would make you more comfortable? And what I'm thinking right now, as much as I'd like to drive this to ground, is we have some time, and if there's some additional information that we could bring forward that would help us make a better decision, you know, we could consider moving this forward, because like I said, we've got a little bit of time to work this. We don't have to take action until the end of the year.
Think about that.
Okay. So I have a couple of thoughts, listening to my colleagues here. And one is, I don't think that what's being proposed in terms of impact fees, or as Councilmember Hunt mentioned, doing just the minimum 50% discount will materially impact growth and development in the city. I don't think it's sufficient to make an impact. The reality is, if we have higher impact fees for schools, it actually better funds the capital programs of our schools. So it is a benefit to the school district for us to do that. And I think it is interesting that generally when cities and municipalities push back on impact fees, it's to lower them because they're trying to drive some growth into the city. And that's, what we're trying to do is make sure that our schools are adequately funded and that the new growth in the city pays for the new growth. And the other benefit is, and I think this is significant to a part of the, a large part of the population who's lived in the city for a long time, is the tax burden of living in Isqwa is becoming noticeable. And anything that we can do to minimize the property tax burden on people who live here is appealing to me. And so, but I also do want to recognize that if there are any implications that we haven't considered around taking some actions, such as raising impact fees higher than what was requested by the school district, that we fully understand those before taking the next step. And so that's why I'm asking the question of, do we need to do some additional data collection, fact finding? Because as I said, we have some time on this particular issue before we really need to take action. Councilmember Hunt?
I'll make a suggestion to that end, which is that I have some concerns about the representation of our student, our projections of student generation, especially, I think, for multifamily. And we do expect to have a lot of growth in the multifamily housing sector in the city. Some of the housing developments that were selected, several, for example, have very low student generation numbers. And I don't think that, based on my personal experience in the city, talking with people, the people that are, the expected growth in this type of housing, I don't think that those are necessarily representative. And I did not receive this evening information, enough information for me to know how they represent the population. I look, though, at these student generation rates, and if you compare it to single-family, there's things like average per unit, single-family grades, six to eight for a single-family was, or let's do, six to eight, it was .158 for single-family, and then it's .058 for multifamily. And I think it's, and it's evidenced by the way the table is set up, it's very dependent on these multifamily housing. So in addition to my concerns about the rationale of doing the discount, I would like more information, if it's possible, about these student generations rates, and if, as you had asked earlier, if they are actually, to the extent possible, if they are tracking with the students that we're seeing, the student enrollment that we are seeing. Because a lot of my concerns about the impact fees have to do with growth and matching growth, and that growth pays for growth. So to the extent possible, it would be helpful for me to know how the calculations match up with that.
Deputy President Batiste?
If we're moving forward and asking questions, one thing that would be helpful for me is, I would want to know how they, during the presentation, Steve had talked about that in their calculations, they go very conservative because the impact fees are not secured. And in order to move forward with their budgeting, they're really having to focus on numbers that are secured. So all of this, everything that we're talking about is really, I would want to better understand from the school district, if municipalities all start to pull apart and they're not able to say, we've got this number that we've used after looking across all the municipalities, and we came up with 70% this year. If it doesn't work that way anymore, how does that impact their budgeting?
Want to ask that tonight?
Sure.
Steve, can you address that tonight? Or we can, for your call?
Can you repeat the question to be sure I'm answering the right thing?
So when you were taught, you had mentioned, you had talked about impact fees are not secured and really within the capital budget, dealing with only secured items. So I guess my question is really around if different municipalities start to break out and they're doing different things, they have different percentages, how does that impact planning and budgeting for the school district?
So as a part of the capital facilities plan, that six-year funding plan, we have to use secured funds to prove that we can fund all of those projects. If we were to put higher numbers for impact fees in there, and we find that there's a downturn, then that money doesn't exist. And what we've used to say that we can fund those projects was not correct. So that's why we are conservative and rely on the secured funding, the bond levy money, much more heavily. The total of impact fees in relation to the total construction budget is a relatively small percentage. But I can't speak for our chief financial officer, but I think he would be pretty leery of using a higher number that we can't guarantee. And as was mentioned earlier by Ann, the impact fee collections have shown very high peaks and very low valleys over the years in the past. So it's not that you can guarantee. We have moratoriums that come and go. Six months, years worth of moratorium makes a big difference on a collection of impact fees. And just the economic cycles, the development cycles, that you have plat approvals and it takes time to build units. When the Highlands started being occupied, there were no kids that came out of the Highlands for years. But four or five years after the occupancy started, now we've got lots of kids. So those kinds of things are kind of hard to build into and guarantee that that funding is going to be there. And again, when the funding is available, goes into the program, reduces the amount of bonds that get sold or used, and that's a benefit to the local taxpayers.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Councilmember Hunt?
Can I just clarify? So with the, it sounded like, in your question, you were asking about the $500,000. It sounds like the school district is going to be conservative to the point where you are sure that it's under the amount that you're going to get. And so if we are, just correct, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if we had, have more than that, you will still continue to try to underestimate. So that is going to continue to be underestimation because it's a very conservative number. So it's not going to, it's not going to raise if we.
Because that's, that's, your financial plan has to be secured funds.
Right.
Yeah. They're a little bit speculative.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I've heard two possibly open issues. One of them is around student generation and how that was calculated. And then the second one, and Deputy President Batiste, tell me if I'm wrong, but there, you, I was picking up a question about what are the legal risks that the city would have if we assign an impact fee other than what was brought forward by the school district?
I think that City Administrator Moon has answered that question. I still have an outstanding question about it, but now that we've had a chance to talk about it, I feel better.
So if we still have questions that we need to get answered, I'd like to get those answered before we take any action. If we don't have questions that we still need to get answered, I'd like to take some action. Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I, so I am, I am concerned that the choice of, especially for multifamily, that they're underestimating. There are some examples in there that are much higher than the average that they come out with. I think that those are potentially much more representative of the multifamily housing that is to come. I guess I tend to be conservative, kind of in the opposite direction of the, of being, of underestimating so that you know that that funding is there. And in this case, I think that we should be conservative in terms of trying to make sure that we have, that we are predicting the impact and that we are assessing the fees that would be required to offset that impact. I am familiar with the, for Cascade Water Lines, for example, there's this regional facilities connection charge. And so you go through the process of determining how much, how, what the impact is going to be for connections to the water system, and then you go through this process of making calculations, and then you come up with a fee. And it's sort of a forward-looking fee to offset that. And I think that in some ways, this is similar, but then there is also this additional discount. And in my opinion, I think that it makes sense to me to make as accurate a representation as possible of what we expect growth in the city to be. Our policies as council affect that growth a lot, and so I think it's important that we do account for that growth. And then to predict based on that what the needs of the school will be, and then to fund that adequately, I think that that is the way forward that makes sense. So I do have a question about that table, but if anything, my question is more about how representative it is and to be sure that we are picking developments that have the student generation rates that we would, that we do expect, especially because to me, it looks like some of them are quite low, and I don't know that that is what we will see in the future.
You have a long title. Deputy President Batiste?
The other, the other question I would have is just the timeline with the capital budget for the school district. And if this were coming forward before the end of the year, I guess I would just ask it again, what potential impact that would have within the capital budget for the school district?
So I believe your adoption takes place January, so you would have until then to make a choice as to approving the current fee and/or changing your ordinance and changing the amount to be collected for single and/or multifamily. I think you have till the end of the year.
Yeah, and like I said earlier, we do have, we have some time. We don't have to really take action till the last meeting in December. Thanks, Steve. But also, if we do have the information we need to make a decision, I think we should make the decision so we can start moving forward down that path. So I'm sometimes good to be chair. I am very comfortable if there's more that we need to say to the administration and to the school district, here's a couple more things we need to make a decision, and we'll come back in October and we'll continue the discussion. I'm perfectly good with that because I want to do it right, and we don't often have the luxury of time, and this time, we do have the luxury of time. So that's good. If we have all the information we think we need to make a decision, then I think we just need to make a decision tonight. So, you know, like I said, there's a couple things, or there's only two things really that I think, and they don't seem like really strong questions. One of them is around student generation, and the other is just clarity around risk that we've kind of kicked around, and it sounds like we have some clarity there. So are there other things that either of you would like to see or hear about to help us drive this to a recommendation to the council? Deputy President Batiste?
So I wonder if there's an opportunity to bring, to bring forward a recommendation that talks about the IMC change, number one, and then separately, that almost a mixture of two and three, the alternatives two and three, that this is something that the council would like to, that we would like to talk, recommend and talk to the council about proposing an increase or to continue to talk with the school district about what is the best option and what is the best timing. I think I'd feel more comfortable with that. However, if you, if you would like to go forward with a recommendation, which is number three, then I could reserve, you know, my comments for having more time to think about that.
Okay. So I think we've separated the two, so I feel good about that, and we have direction on the changes to the IMC. And so what you're suggesting is we actually bring back a question to the council and say, and, you know, and give them, them the choice, or?
Well, in our, you know, in our typical agenda ABs, we often have alternatives. And so I guess my suggestion would be to bring forward alternatives two and three.
Yeah, so I, I think that's okay. I, you know, one of the things that I would like to do as we start to talk about making a recommendation, if we're not all in agreement, then I would like to bring forward a majority recommendation and a minority recommendation. I'm really perfectly good with that if we don't all agree. So, so let's see where that goes. Councilmember Hunt, did you have a thought or a comment on that?
No, that was, that was exactly my thought. I think that I, I think we often do agree on our recommendation, but that is not by any means necessary, and we may not agree on this one. And so then we have a recommendation that reflects that. I think that's totally fine.
Okay. So shall we do this tonight?
I am fine with that.
And to be clear, I think I have some more thinking to do, and I may have additional questions. So that, that was my reasoning instead of going forward with number three and not having a full recommendation. I would like to have a discussion with full council about, about both of those options. There are two different ways to go about what we're talking about. It's either we go forward right away, or we look, we make changes that allow us to go forward, and then we look to go forward in the future. I'd like to talk about that with full council.
But do you, are you, I think the question from the chair, though, is also, so we could vote on that. We could vote on the different parts, or we could choose to, if there are additional questions, we could choose to not vote at this meeting. And so I am, I am comfortable voting, but I don't know if, not sure if anyone else is.
I, I'm comfortable. I'm really want to be, I'm a, I don't like being, to use, you know, the word "jammed up" into making a decision when I don't feel like I have what I need to make the decision. And I don't want, you know, I don't want us to do that. So if we need more information, I, and what I'm torn with, quite honestly, is if we just need more time to think about it, I'm not sure that moves me into not calling the question. But I'm certainly movable. If that would make it easier for us to get there, have more deliberative time, but it's want to, and to keep us on track and knocking this stuff down.
I think just having taken the last year to go through these very same questions and to end where we ended, it was, it was a fair amount of work on behalf of the full council and, and the school board and partnership meetings regarding that. So basically, I'm just being a little more cautious and moving down the road. If you feel that you want to go ahead and take a vote on that, then I can just...
With that?
You know, I can just go with that. But I'm, I would rather, I'm not at a point where I'm wanting to say I am a dissenting vote, as I am at the point, as in number two, that I'd really like the council to have the ability to talk about two options.
Well, why don't we, instead of thinking about you being a dissenting vote, why don't we talk about you as the committee member coming forward with the alternative recommendation? I can get behind that. So, so, I know. So you don't even know how it's going to come out. All right, so what I think I want to do is talk about making a recommendation to the full council to, set the impact fee discount at 50% for the school district.
I, I think that it's difficult to understand it from that perspective. I would phrase it as that we, that we are setting the additional discount to no additional discount.
No addition, no discount beyond the King County formula.
Right.
All right, so the...
Because I think it gets, it is very challenging to go through the steps.
All right. So set the school district impact fee at the level specified by the King County formula without any additional discounts. Does that sound like the right question, right recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. All of those who would like to do that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who would like to offer an alternative, say no.
No.
Okay. So what, so what I want to do is essentially go back to the committee with a majority report that says our, the majority recommendation is this, what we just talked about, and then come back with a minority or an alternative recommendation, which would be something different. Deputy President Batiste, what would that be so we can make sure that it gets in the minutes and in the notes and in the AB?
I would say that it would, it would take the vote that was just made and incorporate the ability to merge in, I have to think about this for a moment. It would be an alternative to, to go with number two, which would be to approve the proposed increase. I just wonder if we want to, how that'd be stronger.
That first sentence looks pretty strong. Approve the proposed increase and commit to actively work with the school district to continue discuss, to discuss expectations and decrease the discount over time?
Yeah, I'm, I, I think I'm okay with that. My purpose, again, is to give, after, again, a very long conversations over this last year, is to give the full council the opportunity to either say, "Yes, we're ready to go forward completely," or to say, "We wish to go forward at a slower rate after, you know, after maybe working through a variety of things, including speaking more with the school district." So it's, it's a faster track or a slower track?
No, I think it's great, and I think what we've done is we've essentially settled on those two alternatives with Councilmember Hunt and myself on one alternative and you on the other, and we bring those both forward as alternatives to the full council. When do we have this scheduled to come back to council?
This is all scheduled for the 15th.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure I'm clear on the, can I repeat it back to you just to make sure?
Please.
So going back to part one, you were, let me find that. You were 3-0 to move forward to full council on the 15th, the recommendation that the city directs the city administration to draft an ordinance to amend the...
Ordinance to amend the IMC.
Okay. And that's going to provide you the flexibility to change?
Yeah, to provide flexibility to change impact fees.
And now we are saying that it is 3 to 0 in agreement? No?
That was 3-0. And then our, and our second recommendation was to set impact fees at the maximum allowed by the King County formula with no additional discounts, and that was recommended 2-0.
Okay, 2-0.
And the alternative recommendation, which I just closed the document, so I don't have it in front of me.
It would be to...
Is it 2-0 or 2-1?
2-1.
2-1.
And the alternative recommendation is?
An alternative recommendation to approve the proposed increase and commit to actively work with the district to continue to discuss expectations and decrease the discount over time.
Thank you, Teresa. All right. I think we got through that one. Ann, Steve, thank you very much for your information this evening, and Trish. All right. Let's move on to Agenda Bill 7655, Expedited Traffic Enforcement Pilot Project Summary Report and Extension, and we have Commander Paula Schwan with us tonight. So Paula, welcome. It's good to have new faces.
Good evening, council members, council and committee members. Thanks for having me this evening. My name is Paula Schwan. I'm the Patrol Services Commander with the Esqwa Police Department, and I'm here to talk about the expedited enforcement pilot results as were discussed on September 4th. Just a little bit of a recap on the agenda bill from March of 18. The council decided that they were going to do an expedited traffic enforcement pilot project for three months between April and June, and that was to emphasize traffic enforcement with the implementation of new staffing that had been approved. So that was for the duration. We had, it takes a long time to get officers on and hired and then through training to get them on the street. So it was proposed to work in conjunction with the Esqwa Police Department and the Washington State Patrol with a contract with State Patrol. So our April numbers weren't as large as we would have liked because it took a little while to get that contract put in place, and so our numbers were greater in May and June. The targeted areas were the downtown traffic commute routes, which was State Route 900, Northwest Gilman, Front Street, and Newport Way. And the program was focused on driving behaviors, excuse me, specifically five different areas, distracted driver, blocking the intersections, turn lanes, distracted driving, and the, there was one other violation as far as, there were several other that were covered, but there was one more specific that we had. Basically, really enforcing safety and other violations and hoping for mobility as well. The data was collected regarding law enforcement actions between State Patrol and the officers in Esqwa, as well as community surveys. Two different categories were used for the survey. There was an increased presence where our proposed outcome, our hopes for our outcome in the traffic locations that were listed. We were to increase traffic stops. The idea was to reduce the driver behaviors and the flow of, and mobility and the mobility in the, or specified locations themselves. These numbers were a little different than what was shown because your request was for, the council's request was for a little bit more data. And so I did some more research and not just what was from the emphasis, but were in the months prior to that, which was pulled, the data was pulled for those specific downtown areas best we could as well, not just from the emphasis. And so prior to the emphasis itself throughout the entire city, there in February, March, there was 277 traffic stops. That's just of all the patrol in those specific areas with only 132 infractions, citations, combination. In May and June with the emphasis, and this is just including the emphasis, so this doesn't include other officers' numbers, is, was 558 because that's all they were, that's their main task. So they weren't responding to calls, they weren't handling collisions or anything else in those areas, and that's why they're, and so 370 infractions, citations, totaling 67% increase with the enforcement itself in those areas and 61% in citations and infractions during that period. In May, there was 110 hours specifically with 297 contacts, which was 1.78 per hour. And in June, there was 57.5 hours where they, 1.27 citations per hour. Again, this is just another look on the division of the five areas. I broke it down, and in the prior, on September 4th, it was broke down to all the categories more that were listed. This breaks down to the five specifically that were to be focused on that was listed in the original proposal in March and, which is distracted driving, improper turning, red lights, blocking the intersections, and basically all others, which could be seatbelt violations, other safety factors that went along with that. First, we're going to talk, and that, sorry, let's back up two slides. This specifically was, the reason I covered this is because it covers our outcome of one and two that we were, had proposed, and we were talking of increased presence in the traffic emphasis locations. So we were showing there definitely was an increased presence in those locations by having the enforcement. And the second one was increased stops, and as you can see, there was a multitude of increased stops, and that was the reason they covered those first two outcomes. And then this one will cover outcome three, which was the reduction of driver behaviors, which impact the flow of traffic in that local mobility. So here, we, I broke it down by those five specific categories that were referenced in the original proposal that were discussed. From State Patrol and from IPD, I broke it down individually as well as by month separately, by May per hour and June per hour. So there was some increases in certain violations, and then there was decreases in others as far as different variations. The officer presence obviously will deter violations, specifically crosswalks, because if you're walking, it's a lot easier to see people, but the cars... if you're walking, it's a lot easier to see people, but the cars have a tendency to stop when you're seeing lights in other locations. So some of those things are, and there's nothing to surround you, so if you see a person there, you're more apt to stop in that type of area, as well as if you see someone that's around, you might put your phone down, whereas if you didn't see an officer, you may not. Seatbelts also, it's funny how when you're driving around, you'll see, someone sees a police car and they're even coming out of a gas station or somewhere else, they happen to put their seatbelt on as they're getting, and they see the officer before they pull on the roadway, or they happen to be getting there. So those are different things that an officer presence will deter quite often. And prior infractions in the same area obviously also will deter violations, because if you have been driving through an area and you're well aware that you've gotten a ticket there before, you've seen people stopped or know people that have been stopped in that area for those violations, you're also going to be making sure that you're stopping if possible. Outcome number four, increased mobility, was difficult, and we can't actually, we're uncertain if that outcome was actually established, because without doing much further research, meaning knowing the flow of traffic and the speeds that are in that location, how many cars actually maybe went through, is a much grander scale of taking numbers. We can get someone's opinion and view, but to actually have numbers is substantial to say whether or not the speed increased, whether or not to know if the number of cars was fewer, or if the infraction itself, or the deterrent was due to there being an officer presence. So to be quite honest, there's much grander scale. I would have to know also if last year, and we had that type of enforcement, what type of numbers there were. So there's some different variations there. The other thing where we say limitations as far as outcome number four is the factor of the types, the time of year that it is. In May and coming into June, we have fewer students that are there, schools letting out, people are starting vacations, there's many different factors that are coming into play when we go to find out if mobility was changed and affected by this. This is some of the information we received from the, sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember Hunt.
Is it, may I ask a question during the presentation? So the last, on the last slide, it seems like there's different effect on different driving behaviors, and then there's kind of a big effect on other driver, driving behaviors. It's dropping from 1.62 to 1.92 per hour. And so is that, are those other driver behaviors that you were talking about, is that the seatbelt and those other ones that you said people tend to change their behavior when they see an officer?
Correct, that's part of it. The other part is, I'm not sure if you remember from the first presentation on September 4th from the chief, but the May per hour also was divided by 110 hours of patrol service, and that was out there extra, whereas there was only 57.5 in the June is also, so that changed the variation quite a bit on how much actual patrol enforcement was out there that was extra, and will change the numbers quite a bit. But yes, the other infractions would be anywhere from suspended drivers, maybe the DUI, there was only like one or two out of the whole, because of the hours that it was, more than anything, but could be suspended drivers, if people know that they're in those areas, they, yes, there are seatbelt violations, there are expired registration tabs, there could be a multitude of things, but any other infraction other than these five, which the RCW has very lengthy. So there could be many, many different others that were established. These are the ones we documented, and so since these were the ones that were initially put in what we were trying to specifically deter, that's the ones that we put out there, and that's why the other is a little more large.
Does other include speed also?
Yes.
Yeah, I, you know, because one of the things we do here is a lot around speed also, so, and that's probably a big hitter.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
So a couple of the things in that we noticed a pattern is that definitely a larger amount of people that were surveyed think that there's definitely not enough enforcement, and that they didn't see much of a difference in their traffic or their commute, was their actual perception. One thing that was also provided in the information were a couple of different locations in the city, not just downtown, but of concerns for traffic. This was the expenditures that was spent and the remaining funds, and again, one of the big reasons I feel that the funds weren't completely met was due to that break in April. We didn't start at the very beginning until we got some of that contract completed and finalized with WSP, and that's why, and we were able to get it full force and had them working from that point forward in May and to June. Continued enforcement, there's several questions that were asked if they think we should. Several people think it was definite that we should continue, and the project in the downtown area, and so those same people, or the majority of them also want to be notified in the event that we do continue that. To let you know, so where we're at as far as, because the implementation of the enhanced pilot project for the enforcement was for getting the officers onboard, and so we do have five officers now in the academy itself. We have the second traffic officer, which will be full time, so we'll have two traffic officers that will be starting by the end of October. So they will be full force, they will also be handling collisions, any traffic related or vehicle related, so whether it be parking problems, whether it be possible DUI or reckless drivers, collisions, taking that away from the officers that are on the patrol, but then also handling mostly traffic enforcement. And they, the third patrol officer will be coming onboard in the second quarter, so hopefully by June of 19. We were able to get one of our officers in, we thought wasn't going to be to the academy till February, is actually started, had started today. So that was fabulous to get five that were in the academy way sooner than we had anticipated. So that was a big piece. That was a timeline for that, and another thing to remember if we, if it's chosen and elected to continue the enforcement, we will have, during that time of May and June, we had one officer that was there for maybe 20 to 30 hours a week in that area specifically working on enforcement. When, by October, when we have our second traffic officer that will be online, he will be 40 hours a week. Now, again, working some collisions and other things in other parts of the, and will be all throughout the city in traffic, but he will also be emphasizing most of the downtown area during those busy times. So he will have 40 hours a week working on those specifics, and we'll have two traffic officers at that time, but as you know, presence is a big thing, and it is a huge deterrent. Whereas if we have two officers, then it gets dark a lot sooner. So that's another piece of that presence. So if we chose to, and the contract's good through the year, so we wouldn't, if we started, it would be hit the ground running. I would let their lieutenant know, and they would have people be signing up, and could be as early as next week, as far as be implemented and starting again, if that was something that was selected. So timeline and timeframe can move a lot quicker as far as getting it, the ball rolling. With it being nighttime, those officers and those lights are a lot more visible. One of them wouldn't be on a motorcycle, so yet, because we have to get him up and running and trained, so it would be actually full vehicles that would be out there as well, and those are a lot of lights, and being it's dark during some of those hours. The other pieces, we're going to be altering or staggering, so our other traffic unit in the past has been to where they were only in like 6 to 4. We are going to stagger the hours to where the second unit would be more in the evening or more of a swing shift kind of, so it wouldn't be all just during the day, to be covering the hours that were specific for the enforcement that had been proposed. So those hours would be helpful as well, and when it gets darker out there and those lights, they can be a deterrent, and that would be our biggest hope as well. Yes?
So I think when we originally looked at this program, we talked about the need for staffing, those, and now we have some people in training. With the additional authorization, would that cover the time in which you, there are officers still in training that wouldn't be able to do that enforcement, meaning like, does it still, does it sort of cover that need, or would the officers that are in training be able to address that need? I wasn't quite clear on when you were saying, as they come, as they finish their training, they're able to start doing some of the patrolling, and how that would line up with this program, which is a temporary program that provides some of the services that the Esqwa Police would also provide once they're staffed.
Sure. So the officer that's going to be coming online in October, so we'll have up to two in the traffic unit, is from officers that were currently in training at the time we started the emphasis and the pilot program. So those officers that were in training originally, then now we're able to get to be those officers that are in traffic, which we didn't have before because they were in training, and now, since they've been cleared and off of it. In that meantime, we also hired five more officers, and so those other officers and this expedited enforcement, if we continued the project, would be filling that gap, and it would be for whatever length that the council saw fit, whether it be for, say, the last three months of the year, October, November, and December, or whether it be all the way through, because the other officer that would be available wouldn't be, the people that are going to be in training right now have just started the academy. So we're looking at still anywhere from about eight months out for three of them, and we're looking for at least five months out still for two of them. So that being the case, we wouldn't get that, another officer available for traffic specifically until around June of 19. So yes, one will be coming on, and we'll have one more than we have in the past, but this enhanced enforcement and project, if we extended it, would be filling part of that gap. Thank you. That's all I have unless we have further questions.
Any, any other questions? Any, I just have a couple of comments. Thank you for doing this. I think this was really very interesting, and I think we learned a lot. I love the fact that you added in this February/March column so we could look at the delta there, so we can see the impact that the enhanced enforcement really did have in terms of number of stops and citations, it just didn't stand by itself, so that was, that was very helpful for me. I also think that we did move the needle, and maybe we didn't move it as much as some people would like, and I don't know that we moved it enough to change the public perception, and your survey would suggest that we didn't. But the thing that really strikes me is there was very little that we saw in terms of the survey, that people were coming back and saying, "Stop it." I mean, you know, you're, you're going over the top, but what we really saw was the vast majority of people saying, "Yeah, more please." So I think that's really interesting. As I read through some of the comments, the other thing that I was struck with was the targeted area, and whether or not that could be larger, and, you know, I know that speed is a big issue in both of the villages, and if we could find a way to extend the area out of the valley and into the hills, I think there might be some interesting opportunities there to make an impact.
Sure, and we can easily change the locations to enhance the ones that either are listed in the comments, or we could just say in the city in general and have just that extra enforcement for wherever they're at, because it is congested in that area and very difficult sometimes in those areas that are closer to the downtown, to, for mobility even for the officers. So as far as going from place to place or getting, once they've pulled someone over if it gets onto the freeway to get back in place again. So those were things that were challenging, but it can easily be addressed. We, yes, Highlands was one of the places, Juniper was one of the places, we got several different locations with the school, sometimes that area is one of the locations, so, and different times a day were listed as well, instead of it just being more in that, those evening hours. So that can be altered in what we tell whoever's doing the enforcement, whether it be our officers or the WSP, definitely.
Deputy President Batiste?
So, thank you for the presentation, and I would echo some of what Councilmember Ray had said. It was, it did seem, as I was reading through all of this, that, you know, that the needle was moved, and just in terms of being more aware, people being more aware, like you talked about, maybe putting your seatbelt on or your phone down, and while the numbers were, some of the numbers were low in terms of how much of a percentage it moved things, then the survey results also said we really would like to see more of this, and so that really leaps me in a place, saying that I think that this is really important and we could continue to do this. It is a really interesting comment about maybe looking at other, at other places. The Highlands comes to mind for sure, and, and maybe having a discussion around that, but I think I would really be in favor of seeing this move forward.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you for the presentation. I am reading through the survey. I think that likely people not seeing a difference, I mean, it's very hard to notice a, you know, fraction of drivers driving more safely through the intersection or having more safe behaviors, which is ultimately what, the outcome that we're hoping to achieve. So I think in asking people if they see that, it's, it would be a very difficult thing for people to notice over the course of their commute if there's, if there is this outcome which we're hoping for. So I, I think more compelling is that we do see, and as you said, that we have evidence that there were safer behaviors, and I think most compelling is that we have officers in training, and this is filling a gap. And so I am also in favor of continuing the program. I think that the option for using, or for allowing the program to expand beyond the specific locations that were original, that's, I think that's in line with how a pilot might work. You, you use one phase of the pilot a certain way, and then you change it and pilot a different approach, which I think it makes sense to, to allow some other locations to have increased emphasis. So I would be in favor of, of that. And I, I did notice in our agenda, the options are through December 31st, which I think is part of our budgeting year, but I think it doesn't, it sounds like it doesn't quite line up with the timeline of the, if we want to completely fill the timing gap. So in our, in our recommendation, I think that could also be a point, that if we, if we want to consider for the council to fund, or to completely fill the gap in terms of when the officers would be fully trained and able to perform this themselves, then I think that we might need to extend beyond the current agenda bill just as the, as up. And to me, since filling that gap makes a lot of sense, I would be in support of that.
I'm going to kind of pile on. I, my thinking about going forward is kind of twofold. One is, we have $10,000 left in what was approved for the enforcement study, and I'd like to see us use that to continue the study at whatever level we can afford to with that. And then the second part is to, and if, you can come back to us with some, some thinking about this, is how do we continue in the first part of 2019 with contract services until we do have our new officers online, and what that would, what the cost of that would be, so we can factor that into our budget deliberations so that we can continue the program into 19? Deputy President Batiste, any thoughts?
I would agree with that.
Oh. So, okay, I'm going to, thank you, Commander Shwan. That was great, really appreciate all the work you and the, and this team have done.
Thank you.
So, so I, what I'd like to do is I'd like to send this back to full council with a recommendation to extend the term of the pilot project for enhanced enforcement, to expend the residual $10,038.69 for approximately one additional month for additional traffic emphasis shifts, as originally authorized by AB 7563, and that's the option number one in our recommendations, make it easy for you. So all in support of that? Questions?
Well, no, I would, I would be in support of the second one.
Okay.
Which would be the additional authorization.
Okay. Okay.
Actually, so 10,000 would, would that cover, let's see. What's the time period that the 10,000 would cover?
I think it's about a month.
About a month?
About a month, that's what it says.
One additional month, okay. So that would not get us to December 31st, okay.
Yeah, the, approximately for three months, it was the 34,125, and so, since three-month period, break it down, it's give or take a little bit, around 10,000. So the three-month period would cover about that much. That's at three shifts a week.
And that, that was the rate that the pilot operated at?
Correct.
And so we do have a, have, thank you for bringing that up. We do have a choice. I mean, one is, we have authorization to spend another $10,000, and that's in the budget now with the recent budget amendment. We could request additional funds from full council to, to fund extending the program for the balance of the year, and that'd be about an additional $30,000, right? So it'd be the 10 that we've gotten residual, plus another 30. So four months, right, September, October, November, December. And then we can talk about budgeting for 2019.
Can I, so if you're going only, we would not actually probably even start till October.
Okay.
So it would be the 34, probably around that, because it would only be the three months, only because we wouldn't be able to get it started for, number one, before approval, number two, then into October, so it wouldn't actually go, and so you would be asking for less if you're going through December 31st.
Yep, and probably, given that we're probably going to target, go back on the 15th of October, would mean we'd be November before we authorize the dollars, so it's difference between one, one or two months.
And the other option would be, we, right now, that was based on doing three days a week. If you, there was, wanted to be more enforcement, we could offer to where it could be five to six days a week. So I mean, there are, there are those options, so, not to muddy the water, I'm just...
Like muddy water.
Yeah.
Deputy President Batiste, any thoughts?
Well, I, so it sounds like we're really looking at a couple of months to get us through the end of the year, and the number would come in lower than we have. If we go forward with that, then it would be good to just get more information about some specifics, and have Jen come and talk to us about what that, what impact that has financially, and, and let the council talk that through, and make that determination. But I think bringing forward number two, especially in light of what we just talked about, that we think the number would be under the 34,000, it would be for two more, probably about two more months, that seems to make sense to me.
Okay. All right, so let me, let me try this one again. So, to recommend to the council to continue enhanced enforcement through December 31, 2018, this would utilize the residual funds of just over $10,000, and require an additional authorization to be determined by the finance...
I think we could do that. What I would suggest is that you make a motion along those lines. What we can do is, under the update section in the bill, as it comes forward for council action, we can include that number, and you could refine the motion at that time. You might even give it an estimated cost of, I think, 21,000?
21 is good.
Something like that?
Okay, so let's do that. All right, let me, let me do this one more time. We're going to recommend to the council to continue the enhanced enforcement through December 31, 2018. This would utilize the residual funds and require an estimated authorization of $21,000 for additional traffic emphasis shifts, 39 traffic emphasis shifts. This expenditure would be included in a subsequent city budget amendment.
What comment?
Councilmember Hunt?
So my comment is that I think the pilot, in my mind, was, was successful. I think that it, as I, as I think I mentioned, if we change it, then it pilots a new, a new program. And I think it makes sense to address the other concerns that were raised in the survey. We did go out to the community, it was something that they engaged with, and they had these suggestions of other places that they would like to see emphasis. And I think that those other places, some of them at least, I've, I've heard from the community before. So I would like to also recommend that the pilot, at that same rate, be, that the, the spatial restrictions be...
Okay, let me try this again. I'm gonna suggest we recommend that we consider the initial pilot complete, and that we continue the enhanced enforcement through December 31, 2018. This would utilize residual funds of $10,000 and require an additional authorization of approximately $21,000 for traffic enforcement. This enhanced enforcement would include a larger area of the city than the initial pilot. This expenditure would be included in a subsequent budget amendment, we think. A little tortured.
Just like to ask a question. Vicky, did you, did you specify which areas, or a discussion about just expanding the area, and we could have a discussion about where?
I think, I think we can have a discussion. I think it also, well, my, my opinion would be that this is funding that fills a gap, and so however those officers would be performing traffic, we could pilot that, and that could cover the, the whole city. But I, I think it could be a discussion. I don't have specific places in mind, certainly.
Let me try it one more time, because I think I got it this time. Okay, so we're going to consider the initial pilot complete, and we're going to continue enhanced enforcement, enhanced citywide enforcement through December 31, 2018. This would utilize the residual funds of $10,000 and require an additional authorization of $21,000 for a different traffic, additional traffic, for, excuse me, emphasis shifts, 39 traffic and emphasis shifts. This expenditure would be included in a subsequent budget amendment. So by inserting the citywide, that gives us flexibility to talk about what other areas we'd like to, to go to.
Does that make sense from an operational standpoint to do that?
Okay. All right, all in favor of recommending that to the full council, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so 3-0. Teresa, do you have it, or you want me to reread it?
You know, I'll, I'll re-listen to it. I think I have the majority of it, it's just that last little tiny bit.
Okay. Well, awesome, thank you. Thank you Commander Shuan. Guess you can't leave though, can you? All right. Administrator Moon?
Hi, I just...
Let's talk about City Gives.
Let's do that. I just inadvertently closed the file, so bear with me for a second here. Okay, I'm happy to be here to provide you with a little additional information, based on a council request from July 24th, when you held a meeting and got a presentation about the Community Fund Grant Program in particular. And I want to thank David for being here tonight. He's gonna help answer any questions on Community Fund, Human Services Fund, things that he has had a little more connection with. And I also want to thank the management analysts, and Amy Dukes, who prepared all this material. So the ask by the council is to come back to this committee and provide you with an A to Z run at all the ways the city contributes, particularly nonprofits in town. And so I'm going to review different categories of contributions. We've, we've called this City Gives, just as a quick way to talk about it. And then I'll open it up to any questions you might have. Ultimate goal for this conversation was to help provide any additional information you might need in order to make easy, smooth deliberations when it comes to budget time, because many of the recommendations on these funding sources are packaged in the proposed budget. So the categories of funding, as we've labeled them, ways in which the city supports nonprofits in town, and thereby is able to deliver more services to community members, include human services grants, and those are given on a biannual basis. They, that, that program is basically administered by our Human Services Commission. These are general fund source of dollars, and there's a set of criteria to establish which organizations are eligible, and they must demonstrate the way in which they provide service to the community. And particularly in the last few years, we have set criteria in order to screen for applications that are going to meet priorities that were identified in the community needs assessment. So in the 2017-2018 cycle, these grants totaled just over 371,000, and were given to a total of 53 organizations. We also contribute to local nonprofits through our arts grant program. Those are given on an annual basis, and the Arts Commission manages that program. Those are funded through the Municipal Art Fund, which is funded through a required contribution for capital projects, and also through admissions tax revenue. The funding criteria for those grants are artistic quality and the community benefit, as this community has strong identity in the arts, and we want to foster that. The commission has also adopted a strategic plan, and so they've aligned their grant selection criteria with that strategic plan. In 2018, the arts grants totaled just over 173,000, and were given to 27 organizations. Of that 173,000, 141 was given to nonprofits. The other largely, I think, goes to individuals that aren't incorporated with that same sort of status, but provide those art services. The next category of grants is Community Fund Grants. This is the one that you just discussed recently. Those are given on an annual basis through a process developed by the mayor's office, and we utilize a community volunteer review panel to look at those applications. The grants are focused on building capacity of nonprofit organizations in our community. And in this year, the budget was set aside, and the grants that were delivered totaled approximately $127,000 to nine organizations. Next category of contributions to community groups is what we call contracts for services, and...
Emily?
Yep, sure.
Question?
So the arts grant, it says it's funded by admissions tax revenue, so that's admissions to events, and anything that you would pay to attend, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that, so our arts, our municipal art is funded entirely by admissions tax revenue, is that correct?
We, we also have a component that typically goes to kind of capital construction type projects, so think about public art program. So we also have a, a grant of sorts that's funded through capital construction, kind of permitting costs. There's an increment that is charged to those public projects, and then set aside to ensure that those public projects incorporate an art element. So when the pool was renovated, we had a portion of that project budget that was set aside in order to do public art at that facility. That's another piece that isn't, isn't mentioned here. As I was reading ahead, I got ahead of myself. And, but, it is another way in which we support arts in the community, and the Arts Commission is involved with reviewing those projects. Doesn't go to nonprofits, it goes to, in this case, it actually goes to city as public entity.
And that would be, if it was a capital project, it would be capital fund?
Correct.
Okay, so there, there is some funding for art from the city funds, other than from the submissions tax?
Correct, embedded in project costs, projects of the city.
Great, okay, thanks.
Next category, contracts for services. This is a category where the city elects to engage in a contract with a service provider in order to provide services the city doesn't provide on its own, or to enhance experiences, access to community members. And so we typically contract with organizations that have specific expertise, or deliver a particular product. And typically, that's when the city is not poised and ready, or adequately equipped to provide those resources. So in 2018, the city administered four contracts for service, totaling just over 144,000. And these contracts for services were with Friends of Issaquah Salmon Hattery, or Fish, the Issaquah Historical Society, Leadership Eastside, and Mountains to Sound Greenway Next category is one we're calling sponsorships, and these are funds that are within, again, the general fund operating budget, where the city has provided some level of support for organizations to conduct their fundraising events. And in 2018, the city provided 3,500 in sponsorships to Forterra and Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust. So that, what this typically looks like is the city sponsors a table or a portion of the fundraising event, to then leverage additional contributions from other entities in order to then ensure that these nonprofits have financial ability to give back to our community. Next category is lease and rental agreements, and the city provides some support to nonprofits in the form of reduced rate lease agreements, and also facility rentals. These are, have been negotiated on a case-by-case basis. Some of the leases have been quite long. As they have come due, we have been working to try to get those leases more in line with market-based rents. But as I said, that's going to be a multiple-year effort. We've put those groups on notice to some degree, that that's the way in which we're taking our policy and practices. And as you know, we are targeting a work plan item next year to kind of review all city facilities from an inventory and a use standpoint. In addition, we often provide a reduced rate to nonprofits that are renting our facilities for events or programs that are serving Issaquah residents. Next category, we just labeled other support, and this is a mixed bag of things, but we want, we want to get everything out in front of you. So in this category, by and large, the city's serving as sort of a fiduciary agent or conduit for programs. We listed those. Main Street Program, which is part of DIA, or Downtown Issaquah Association, that's a council directive. Council voted to have us participate... Council voted to have us participate in that program and to provide, it's either a, in Washington State, it can either be a BNO, Business and Occupancy Tax Credit, or Public Utility Tax Credit to organizations that make charitable donations. So it's really a credit on some taxes as it passes through the city's books. The next is Influence the Choice, and that's our Drug-Free Community Coalition. We serve as their fiduciary agent. Again, just money is passing through our books and we're providing some in-kind assistance in our finance department on that front. Lodging Tax Advisory Commission, you all know about that and our role with that group, which you may consider separate entity and kind of quasi-governmental, quasi nonprofit. In addition, in this category, we just said we provide in-kind contributions to other nonprofits.
Emily, one more.
Can you explain how the Lodging Tax Advisory Board is quasi nonprofit? Is that what you said?
Yeah, quasi-governmental is how I termed it. So they provide some services to community, again, that look, in my opinion, at times like arms of the city of Issaquah. Right now, for example, we're talking about, LTAC has spoken for a few years now about wanting to contribute to branding and wayfinding efforts that the city would partner on and would benefit both city residents and, of course, the members that are served by LTAC, the lodging hoteliers.
So are you saying then that because the city has representation on that board, it's providing in-kind services through the advisory?
No, I'm also saying that their objectives sometimes align with our objectives and so sometimes city funds go to support their objectives. So if we look at this from that City Gives perspective, City Contributions, we did not want you to say, well, what about LTAC? Don't we give money to LTAC in order to support some of their objectives and delivery of service to residents? And we do.
But they are not a nonprofit.
Correct. Correct. Okay. Then, other in-kind that we talked about or listed here include assisting with community events that are put on by nonprofits, helping them to deliver services from time to time, and staff serving as ex officio board members on some of those nonprofits. So that's the big overview. What I'm going to bring up on the screen is other pages from your packet. One of the things that we have heard is that you wanted to see it all in one place. And so that is what we've attempted to do here on this table. We've listed all of the organizations that are supported by the city. We gave you the amount of support that was given in 2018. In 2019, it's less complete, of course, because we haven't had budget deliberations on those things. So as you look through that column, be aware there are either indications of proposed or anticipated to be proposed budget amounts or grants that were recommended to you in July. But the other categories, the Human Services Commission, for example, is still reviewing applications and has yet to make their recommendations. And then we listed the type of support, so you could link back to the memo and understand which category we were putting those in. And then further on, we give you some totals as well, so you could look at it from that standpoint. And we just wanted to give you kind of a visual on it. So city support comes in these different buckets as we have defined them. And here are some short definitions that help explain what the use is for each of those different categories. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions or have David assist.
Alex Member Hunt.
It came up when we were discussing the community grants about the capacity component of the intent for who would receive a community grant. And so at the time, I had asked Amy Dukes for the RFP and she provided that. And I see that it does say capacity in there, but it also then talks about examples of allowable uses include organizational planning and/or implementation. And so I think that that's very, that then is very broad. To me, that reads as you can use this funding to build your capacity for your programming that you are doing, basically. So I wondered if you could talk a little bit about the capacity, how the intent's there with capacity, including that word, and the intent with what kind of projects you're targeting with this funding?
Sure. David can assist me with this, too. We've given a variety of different capacity grants. On the planning side, I think the argument has been that many times nonprofits don't have the ability to bring in a trained facilitator or someone that can help lead them through a strategic planning process or a funding strategy, planning effort. And that if they were enabled to do that work, they may then be able to enhance their strength and therefore then grow their capacity. So that's why we've included that planning element as potential eligible activity. And then other capacity grants, maybe David can give some examples of those.
So in some other cases, there are, and I agree with what you're suggesting, because there is kind of the capacity building for an organization and then that implementation side feels a little bit different. As an example, there have been some cases where, and actually, we've had several agencies that have wanted to implement some new customer resource management software, CRM software, in order to aid their capacity for development. And so that's been, especially as the landscape for nonprofit funding has shifted from traditionally kind of more central sources to one-on-one interactions and securing donors in that way. It's more about the acquisition and implementation of those kinds of tools that's been part of building their individual capacity. So there are some cases where it is, feels like it's kind of, it is implementation, but it's for a specific purpose. And then I think there is, to be frank, there is a kind of gray area here about how long support is kind of there to provide for capacity building and at what point does that cease to be the case and it's kind of up to them to continue on their own.
Yeah, I would just add that some of those are just discrete activities that have an endpoint and then other times, there needs to be more conversation about when that assistance needs to either end or transition to something different.
Deputy President?
So how long with the, I'm sorry, with the Community Fund Grants? We now have a community volunteer review panel and how long have we had that panel in place?
This is the first year that we've used community panel. As we articulated in July, we've been trying to get a little bit more systematic about how we review grants. We started with the Human Services Grants and then turned our attention to this source of funding. And when we did that, the first year, we turned our attention to it, we set criteria, eligibility criteria and use criteria for the money. Second year, this year, we then looked at who was reviewing those applications. And instead of it just being staff in Mayor's Office reviewing those applications, which had been the case historically, we brought in various board and commission members as volunteers.
Anything else?
I have some comments.
Comment away.
Okay. Well, I think that we, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for putting all of this together because I think that it paints a much more clear picture of what we do in this arena on a lot of different fronts. And that can be, it can be a little confusing as you're trying to go through. And we, for a few years back, have talked about, more about the Community Fund Grants and really what they mean, what, how that's being defined. The Human Services Grants have really evolved in such a huge way over the last three or four years in terms of the process that surrounds those grants. And so seeing that start to happen with the Community Fund Grants, I think that we definitely have some more work to do in that area. And I, but I think that this is a great start to be able to further define that. It's always been a little bit, a question that I had is that as we looked at the Human Services Grants and really the arduous process that all of the groups go through within that program, sort of compared to the Community Fund Grants. And so having that, you know, starting to build that out, I think is really important. But this gives a much more clear idea of all the different things that the city does. And I think as we look at, again, across the whole landscape, it's very helpful.
I would agree with that. I think that this is really helpful to see it all. And I think it's helpful to think through some of these that are non-monetary or partially non-monetary, like the, well, the subsidized rental fee, for example, and providing space and those sorts of things. I think it's, I think it's good to see it all in one place so we can consider the bigger picture, which I think was the reason for the ask. So I do find it helpful. I also, there are just some interesting things to me, like the scale of sponsorship. It's so small. I sort of wonder why that would have to be a different category than putting it in a different category. But, I mean, I think overall, it shows how the city gives money to all these nonprofits and it definitely helps me understand better the scale of those gifts.
Deputy President Batiste?
So one question that I had is in regard to the groups that are coming forward, which is in my purview, anyway, the largest group is probably the Human Services Grants, that groups that are coming forward. Are they notified that there are other, that there are other grants available in terms of, for example, the Community Fund Grant and capacity building when they come forward? I ask the question because the different nonprofits and groups that come forward to the Human Services Commission can be small or they can be larger, they can have professional grant writers or be working on writing the grant themselves. And I'm wondering what sort of outreach we do in terms of letting them know about that.
That's a great question. There's a little bit of a distinction, I think, between the two grant programs and the agencies that are participating in each. The Human Services focus more on service provision for our resident population or as a part of the Eastside kind of package of services that need to be provided as a part of our kind of service continuum. The Community Fund Grants have been more focused on capacity building of organizations that are in Issaquah and providing service in Issaquah. So it's a little bit more locally based from that standpoint. And it doesn't, we haven't, at least historically, funded an agency based out of Bellevue, for example, or Renton, that might be doing service in the community. So it's, I think it's a little bit more focused locally. And as far as the outreach to the different folks, there is a fair amount of outreach that occurs there. I know that emails are sent directly to past applicants. It's also included in the Insider website, kind of through the regular channels for providing information out to the community about those opportunities.
Thank you.
Ellen, thank you for doing this. This really, I think, responded perfectly to the ask from the council. It was, we put it all in one place, it described it, it's going to be a useful tool going forward, I'm sure, for everybody. So when we're talking about a contract for service, we know what the heck we're talking about. So thank you for doing that. So.
Certainly. I also wanted to share, I was prepared, that if you had additional questions about those entities that we're giving contracts for services for, one of the questions in July was, you know, what differentiates a contract for service versus a grant? And we said, well, one actually really does have a contract that's not just about, you know, going through an application process and getting cut a check. So if the council wishes at some point in time, whether that's during budget deliberations or the committee would like it now or later, I have little blurbs on those entities that are receiving contracts for services and what the deliverables are and the scope of work on those contracts. So we'd be happy to share that if you'd like.
Thank you. Emily, thanks for this evening. Any departing comments? All right, the next Services and Safety Committee will be on October 9th at 6:30 PM here in council chambers and we're adjourned.